We will call the meeting of Door County Board of Supervisors to order on for January 28th and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Are we ready?
Mr. Brand's not here yet.
Hey Chuck.
How's your work Chuck?
They stole it.
He has to be retrained.
Set in the dance.
They're just following our leadership.
They were testing me to see if I knew how to do it. Bad battery apparently.
No, they need a brand new battery.
Boston to the agenda. Second by Susan. All in favor say aye. I'm going to DB from the agenda and it says at the bottom that we can do that. We're going to go to the bicycle plan and then we're going to go from the bicycle plan immediately to the resolution on the bicycle plan and then we'll go back up to the man from Leo. So we'll move that way. But in your packet are some correspondence from the Bay Shore Property Owners Association, Horseshoe Bay, the League of Women Voters, and the signed fund bill. Do you want to comment on any of them or?
Yes, there's one more piece that was at your places today that's not listed on the agenda. It's this piece that you all can see. It's regarding, there's a call to action from Senator Leibum is proposing some changes to 911 funding. This is exceedingly important. You recall last year's budget AT&amp;T had begun to charge us a new fee, $80,202 as a result from underfunding of the 911 system. So this potentially is an exceedingly important piece of legislation. Should you see Senators LaSalle or Representative Bice, please encourage their support of this. In addition to that, CATS will take this up at their next meeting. So thank you. That's it.
Any questions on the correspondence? If not, we'll go to public comments. The people that want to speak on the bicycle thing, do you want to speak before or after the report is given? Because we did allow that to happen.
After.
After? Okay. Is there any other public comment? I'll allow public comment after the bicycle report is given, on the bicycle report only. But is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak? If not, I don't see anybody. So we'll allow public comment on the special report of the bicycle. So the next item is to go into the special report on the Door County Bicycle Pedestrian Recreational Facility Master Plan presentation. John, you want to come up and introduce?
I hope you're not going to go through page by page.
It's warm in here, we might do that. Morning everyone. In July of 2011, Door County received a bicycle pedestrian facilities grant and the sole purpose was to develop a countywide plan of transportation alternatives to automobile travel, including the future construction of interconnected network of walkways, bicycle lanes, and shared use trails that connect locations where residents and visitors live, work, shop, attend school, and play. Although the grant was specific about bicycle and pedestrian facilities, we were able to incorporate other recreational and multimodal transportation means such as horseback riding into the study. However, the significant majority of the study that you have before you addresses bicycling facilities. The report signifies the completion of this two and a half year project. Door County hired the Wisconsin Bicycle Federation who in cooperation with all the planning and design worked to develop this product that you have before you for adoption today. Before Sarah Gaskell from the Bicycle Federation proceeds with her short presentation, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of many people who have contributed to this study, including the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the Wisconsin DNR, the Door County Highway Committee, and the county board members, and the public who participated in the four public informational meetings that were held in northern and southern Door County, as well as those who took time to respond to an online questionnaire survey. Specifically, I would like to acknowledge the work group that was established to serve as the oversight committee in the development of this plan. Those include the following, and they are listed in the acknowledgements on the report on the opening page, but I would like to name them. Specifically, I want to mention Ben Meyer, county board supervisor who also chaired the work group, took a significant effort in leading the charge in developing this plan. Also included in the work group study was Amy Bauer from the Funds Riders of Glacial Drummond Horse Trail Association, Bob Dixon of the Shallows, Brian Merkel from Nord Door Sport and Cyclery, Brian Troutman from the Bay Shore Property Owners, Jack Money Penny from the Door County Visitors Bureau, Leif Hagman from the Nord Door Sport and Cyclery, Mariah Good from the Door County Planning Department, Mary Malik from the Washington Island, or the former chair of the Washington Island Parks Committee, Randy Saz from the Door County Silent Sports Alliance, Rebecca Kerwin also from the Planning Department of Door County, and Sam Perlman from the Door County Economic Development. In addition, in order for this project to proceed, one of the requirements was that we received, there was 80% of the funds were received from the grant. The other local 20% match was by the county of Door through the highway department, as well as the remaining 10% was by a list of donors that I want to read their names and thank them publicly for their donation. But they came up with the matching 10%. And those included the Door County Properties Owners, the Whitefish Bay Association, the Door County Land Trust, the Bay Shore Property Owners, Sustain Door, Door County Silent Sports Alliance, Door County Triathlon, the Door County Visitors Bureau, and the Friends of the Door County Parks. If you have an opportunity to thank any one of them or any of those associations, I would greatly appreciate that you do that. This master plan developed many projects and programs throughout the county. It is a critical component in seeking future grants for the construction of projects or programs that were identified. Please keep in mind that this study is only a planning tool. It does not commit the county to completing any project or expending any funds. It will be used in the future planning for our capital improvement program, allowing you to make those decisions in the future. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Sarah, and she has a brief presentation for you.
Thanks John. John said it is brief. We're not going into a lot of detail because it's all in the plan and there's a lot of detail in there. I encourage you to read it at some point. I've got a short presentation.
Hey John.
A few slides. Oh, thank you. So the project objectives, typically how we run bike pet plans is we figure out what we're going to, you know, we start with the end in mind. First of all, we came in and looked at existing conditions all over the county and determined needs either from local residents and visitors. We accomplished that through a number of public meetings and work group meetings as well as an online survey. We use all of that information to make recommendations and then the whole point of this is to produce an actionable plan. Actionable meaning hopefully this plan will not sit on a shelf and not be referred to, but be a plan that conforms with local state and national standards and practices. And when you go, for instance, to look at resurfacing a road and it's coming up on the regular schedule, then that's when you look to see if you can put in shoulders, for So this is just a map of the existing network. The maps are in your plans if you'd like to look at them in more detail. That's southern door, northern door. In terms of existing facilities, there are a few bike lanes in Sturgeon Bay. There's the Anapi State Trail, it's probably the best known multi-use trail in the county. There are a few other short segments of shared use trails, but in terms of facilities, inherently Door County is already a great place to cycle. When we look at existing facilities, we also look at opportunities and constraints within the system and a couple of the opportunities we found were the existing bike pet plans. A lot of municipalities in Door County already have their own plans, whether they be a standalone bike pet plan or a parks and rec plan that incorporates some recommendations for bicycling. Also the Anapi Trail, we heard over and over through our public process that the big dream someday is to extend the trail all the way to Gil's Rock. Obviously that is a big dream, but we want to mention it because that would be certainly a great facility for the county and something you could market nationally. In terms of constraints that we found within the system, there are a number of gaps in the system, meaning if you're trying to get from point A to point B, you might encounter a segment of road that's rather difficult or uncomfortable for a cyclist to be on, either the speeds on that road are too high, or the traffic volume is too high, or there's not a place for you to get out of the way, so to speak. And also in general, wayfinding signage, as a cyclist in the county, unless you're familiar or you have a countywide map, knowing where you are and where you're trying to get to can be difficult. Our public outreach schedule was pretty extensive for this project and we had a lot of really great participation. We had six work group meetings and as John mentioned, he mentioned all those people, we had elected officials, local club representatives, citizens, year-round residents, summer residents, and a lot of county staff involved, as well as small business owners. We had three series of public meetings and we operated the meetings such that if you lived in northern door, you could attend a meeting there. If you lived in southern door, you could attend a meeting there. So each public meeting was held in a series of two consecutive nights. We also did an online survey and we had about 700 participants, which is pretty great for an online survey, and the results of that are in your appendix. We had a highway committee meeting and then this is the last of our public outreach for this plan. So the recommendations, we grouped them basically into three different categories. The first are policies and programs. We recommend that the county consider adopting a countywide complete streets policy. What this does is it ensures that when you are going to make improvements, you at least consider all modes of transportation for that segment. That does not in any way require the county to put in a bike lane or a sidewalk. It just means that when you go to do those improvements, you at least consider it. And for the most part, you won't be doing that because of the breadth of rural highway that the county has. We also recommend making permanent, in a way, the work group committee that guided this plan and turning it into a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. And this committee would be a formal county committee. It would show your residents and your visitors your commitment to bicycling and walking opportunities within the county. You would also be able to rely on that committee to sort of guide any of the planned recommendations as they come up, or any bicycle and pedestrian issues that come up, and also when it comes time to assist with locating the funding or doing the grant applications, or being aware of funding opportunities to make those improvements. We also recommend partnering with municipalities, bicycle and other user groups to implement the programs that are recommended in the plan. In terms of infrastructure projects, again, we have three categories. First one we looked at was paved shoulders. Paved shoulders suffice perfectly for cyclists in many conditions. So we've recommended about 58 miles of county highway for paved shoulders. In terms of what they can do, they also benefit, they have other benefits just than for cyclists. They give cyclists their own space on the road that takes them out of the travel lane, but it also provides benefits to farmers and farm machinery to also get out of the travel lane. We have seen benefits for winter driving, which is something obviously we experience in Wisconsin a lot, and also extends the general life of the pavement. Your road will last longer if we have a shoulder. We recommend that those paved shoulders be implemented when the road is already on the schedule for improvements. We're not advocating that you go out and pave all these shoulders tomorrow, it's just when that section of road comes up on John's schedule, that's when paved shoulders are considered. So just two examples of the paved shoulders we're recommending are Q from State Highway 57 into Ephraim, and PD from C into Potawatomi. And I have to say, most of these recommendations came from our public meetings and polling local cyclists and people who use these roads. Where do you ride now? Where would you like to ride? How do you get there? What would be a preferred way to get there? Another recommendation we have is to increase the number of shared use paths within the county. We're calling for about 21 miles, the bulk of which is on County Trunk Highway A from 42 to V, which would essentially allow cyclists to get from 57 to 42. That's a great north-south route. It's really pleasant, it's low travel, low speeds, and this was a project that actually we had our subconsultant, which is an engineering firm, look at a little bit more extensively, and that report is in your appendix. Another one would be extending the existing shared use path that's on 42 right now from Bella Vista Lane to County Lane. That's something that some of the business owners in Ephraim brought up, specifically the owner of Red Putter. He'd love to be able to get more people to his business without having to walk on the The bulk of the recommendations are signed bike routes. We're calling for about 368 miles, so basically all of the bike routes in the county to be signed. And the nice thing about this is it's one of the lowest cost, yet most effective improvements in terms of dollars spent. It also provides opportunity for partnerships, whether that be with municipalities or local clubs, other opportunities to do a little bit of cost sharing. And the example there in the corner is kind of like what we'd like to see for wayfinding signage. It provides directional information to tell us the cyclist where you're going, if you're turning left or right. It provides the distance to your destination, and the other nice thing it does, it also supplies information on the general time it's going to take there. A lot of times, sometimes five miles might seem like a really far way to go on your bike or walk, but really when it's only 25 minutes of cycling, that's much more doable for people. These are just the maps that are in your plan that show the recommendations. The yellow lines are the recommendations for paved shoulders. The blue dotted lines are the signed bike routes. One thing that came out of this plan that I think is a pretty neat idea and maybe will be able to be implemented more quickly than some of the other recommendations are Bike the Door routes. This is just a name that we came up with, but basically it's 13 recreational loops located throughout the county. Those are the blue lines on the maps. They feature parks, communities, local cultural amenities like shipwrecks, and they're marketed towards maybe a family with teenagers that's looking to do a ride in the summer. And it's modeled after the National Park Passport Program. This is a program that the National Parks uses where when you visit a national park, you get a stamp in your book. So we're thinking that you would have a book created or a map created for these routes. If you do the route, you get a stamp. For instance, one of the 13 routes is the Shipwreck Tour, which takes you from Ephraim to Bailey's Harbor to Fish Creek and back to Sister Bay. And on that route, you would encounter four communities, three shipwrecks, and Peninsula State Park. And we made sure that every community was on a route, every cultural amenity that we could find was on a route. We hit all the parks and obviously every route has an option for food, drink, and restroom facilities. And this is something that you could do out of the tourism department as well. It'd be simple as creating a map and sort of marketing it, bringing in other partners to help you fund it, do some advertising on the map, and to get some money in that Implementation, in terms of the timeline, we divided all the projects into short, medium, and long-term projects, and most of these projects we're recommending that you undertake as funding becomes available or in conjunction with other scheduled projects. In general, sometimes there's this straight up question, why do a bike and pet plan? And so I just wanted to touch on some of the benefits of bicycling because that's something obviously we at the Wisconsin Bike Federation are very concerned with. And I just, these are very general, but I wanted to explain a few of them. In terms of health improvements, there are health improvements to the person and health improvements to the community. Studies have been done that showing just by increasing bicycling in your daily life, you can obviously increase your own health, but as a result, you can reduce your personal healthcare costs. And they've, on average, about $500 just by increasing some bicycling time in your life. In terms of increased safety, where communities have invested in making their facilities available to cyclists and walkers, the risk of injury from motorists is significantly reduced. You don't have a big problem with that in Door County, which is really good, but there are Madison, for instance, as we make Madison more bike and walk friendly, we're actually making it safer for people because we're giving bikers and walkers their own dedicated space. And therefore, more people will be, come out to use the facilities and they become more visible as a group to motorists. In terms of increased community assets, there have been numerous studies done that show that property values for homes that are adjacent to trails actually increase over time. And one thing that's very significant to the county here is just the overall economic impact of making bicycling and walking accessible to people. It's a multi-billion dollar industry. Wisconsin has actually has a multi-million dollar industry with the bike industry is really strong here. And one thing we asked of local event organizers, and you have a lot of events here, and this is a very popular destination for people to come with their family to do these events. Some of these events are the triathlon, the century, Run Wild, I mean, there's almost, sometimes it seems like there's an event every weekend. We polled the event organizers to find out if they had done any surveys of their participants so we could get an idea of the economic impact of bringing those people into the county for the events. And Sean Ryan got back to us, and he does the Door County Triathlon as well as the Century. And he polled his participants and plugged it into a formula here, and basically from his, last year's Door County Century, he estimated the tourism impact to be $512,000. And his Door County Triathlon, $615,000 money brought into the county, and that's the impact. So that's $1.1 million from two events. What's interesting about this is that this year, the triathlon sold out, the triathlon has two events, a long event, which is the half iron, and the short event. The half iron sold out in a week, which blew records out of the water. So people want to come here and ride, and they bring their families here because there's enough things for families to do and it's a beautiful place to come for a weekend. So with that, I will take any questions you have. Also, Ben's available to answer any questions, and John as well. Thank you.
Any questions? You can turn the light back on. Go ahead Chuck.
I guess with this plan now, do we move ourselves up the ladder towards grant money?
Yes. Yes. Because a lot of the funding, they want to see that you have your projects all lined up, ready to go. So now you can pull this, when John's looking at his CIP, he can pull it and see what's on the agenda. So yeah, I'd say it definitely does.
Are there any other questions? Boy, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now reopen, public comment, and anybody wants to make a comment on specifically the bike, come forward by the mic right there and state your name and address and, I don't know how long you're going to comment, but we got like a two or five minute period.
Okay. Randy Saz, DCSSA. I'm a resident here of Door County, 6445 Berg Road, Sturgeon Bay, Wisconsin. I wanted to extend thanks to Door County Land Trust, Bay Shore Property Owners, Sustain the Door, Friends of Murphy Park, Door County Century, all the members of DCSSA, the Visitors Bureau. I want to thank you all for, you know, considering this and, you know, bringing this into our county. As a business owner and a resident, I think this is going to be a really great thing to grow our community in the future and also make it safer for cyclists. And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment? If not, we'll close that comment. And Ben, I'm going to skip down to Resolution 201401, and I would think you'd like to make a motion to.
See, what motion should I? Oh, I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 201401 adopting the Door County Bicycle Pedestrian Recreation Facilities Master Plan.
Second by Joel. Here's end up quicker. Is there any discussion on it? Go ahead Ben.
I'd just like to briefly say thank you to everybody involved. This was a fantastic project to work on. It's the end of the beginning, so we have our collective work cut out for us implementing this plan over the next few years, decades even maybe, but we're looking for steady progress. So, and another huge thank you to all those who donated and continue to support the plan and bicycling and walking in Door County.
You?
I'd just like to comment, as most of you know I have an N. And I would say that probably during the summertime, 70 or 80% of people bring bicycles with them. It's a major part of our tourism in the summertime, and I hope this continues to grow and it gets to its fulfillment. It's important, I think, to have it in the community. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no on accepting the plan. You did that on purpose.
Yeah. I had to get my camera ready.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Excuse. Just want to remind you, if you're going to put it on the shelf and not look at it again, please bring it back to the county so they can pass it out to other people that might want to.
I'll take them.
Do you want to take them or?
It's just like a collection point. If you're not going to take them, use it. I'll be gladly to stack them up here on Leo's desk.
Is this available electronically now so we can view it on the computer?
Go ahead John.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment. Now that it's been adopted, we will be getting a CD from the Bike Federation and it will be put online so you, anyone can take a look at it and go to that site. But we were just waiting for the final approval.
Dale?
Are we going to make sure that the towns and villages also have copies of this?
Well, it's going to be online, so they can pull it off online, the whole thing.
I mean, they're going to be a key part in this, I believe.
If they so request, yes.
I'll give it to them.
So, yeah, there's at least 20 some extra copies now for most county board members turning back in. Okay, next item on the agenda, we'll get back on the agenda, is, Biz, you want to introduce? You're the one that, come on up Biz. This is on the Leo board, that Biz has been after us for, I think, a number of years to have some presentation on what the Leo board is all about. It's really not named after Leo Zipper. It's named after what?
It's probably always been hard for me to explain everything we do, but I've been on the Leo board for, I don't know how many years, I didn't add them all up, but it's actually a call of the county board chair. He can serve on that committee and when Charlie Most was chair, he actually chose to be on there, and that was probably the only few years that I wasn't on the Leo board, so.
Lyle Hill before you?
Yeah, and Lyle Hill before him, but under Leo Zipper and under Chairman Austin, they appointed me to be on the Leo board and we generally meet quarterly and go over all the good programs that you're going to hear about this morning. So I'd like to introduce Jim Galumbowski. He's the head of the Northeastern Wisconsin, the 10 counties that, 11 counties, that's right, after Otage Gaming County, that are involved with this, and I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Okay, Biz informed me that your report could be up to four hours, but we sort of cut you back to 15, 20 minutes.
We're going to do the best that we can. And just if you want to, whenever we seem to talk about workforce. Sir, would you please use the microphone? I will, thank you.
I'm not good at sitting still. I'm also uneven. I broke three bones in my foot walking on a beach in Puerto Rico. I know, I'm not getting the sympathy I think I deserve. Let me also just begin by marking the passing. Excuse me, one of my heroes, Pete Seeger. I met Pete many years ago. Pete taught me that if something needed to be done, you get a bunch of people to do it and never out of anger. He was a great man. All right. Here's what we're going to do. I'm going to tell you who we are and why you care. We'll tell you what we've done and what we're going to do. Does that make sense? Anybody want to do anything different? All right. That's me, Bay Area Workforce Development Board. I'm a private nonprofit organization, completely funded, almost completely funded with federal dollars. All right. Let's go next.
You're going.
Oh, I get to do it. That's right. Next. Here we go. The government has had its government hands in workforce issues for a long time. It goes back actually before, but many of you will remember the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. Many of our government offices had CETA workers. The idea was to train unskilled workers for government jobs. That changed in 1982 under a program created by Dan Quayle and Ted Kennedy called the Job Training Partnership Act, in which case, we, I'm sorry, oh, which case we developed programs for low-income adults, dislocated worker, at-risk youth. It was based on a social service model and we focused on how do we get these people job-ready? That changed again in 1998 with the Workforce Investment Act, and this was a big change. The change, the change really involved, how do we set up a system to help people get employed, but it was based much more on an economic development model and much more focused on what our employers need. So the Workforce Investment Act says that the purpose of this thing is to provide workforce investment activities through state and local workforce systems that increase the employment retention and earnings of participants, increase occupational skill attainment by participants, and as a result, improve the quality of the workforce, reduce welfare dependency, and enhance the productivity and competitiveness of the nation. I spent 21 years trying to do that. You see why my hair is the color that it is. The local board, and this is what I do, 11 county area shall promote the participation of private sector employers in this thing to ensure the effective provision through the system of connecting, brokering, and coaching, my three favorite words, through intermediary such as the one-stop operator and other organizations to assist employers in meeting their hiring needs. All right, so the money comes down like this, and this is why you care. Starts at the Department of Labor and every year in the federal budget, the Department of Labor. I spent 21 years trying to do that, you see why my hair is the color that it is. The local board, and this is what I do, 11-county area shall promote the participation of private sector employers in this thing, to ensure the effective provision through the system of connecting, brokering, and coaching, my three favorite words, through intermediaries such as the one-stop operator and other organizations to assist employers in meeting their hiring needs. All right, so the money comes down like this, and this is why you care. Starts at the Department of Labor, and every year in the federal budget, the Department of Labor gets about $3 billion for Workforce Investment Act programs throughout the country. A piece of that money then comes down to the Department of Workforce Development at the State of Wisconsin, and a piece of that money comes down to the counties. And if I grab the money and head back to Puerto Rico, you are responsible. Our friends in another part of the state unfortunately found out three years ago that bad things can happen, and they're still fighting with the Department of Labor over four and a half million dollars that not exactly were misspent, but were not administered properly. We fortunately have not had that problem, and I make sure that Biz and the others on the local elected officials board see our regular independent and state audits, so they know we're on the up and up. But ultimately, you, with the other 10 counties in this region, are responsible for what I do. Good luck. We've been at it 21 years, and I've been okay so far. All right, so each of those 11 counties either sends an elected official or an appointee to the local elected officials board, and as Biz said, we meet quarterly. Your job is to set up the area, the 11-county area, maintain legal and fiscal responsibility, appoint the workforce board members, designate somebody to handle the money, keep an eye on what the board does, and review and agree to our local plan. Local plan means how do we help our employers find the workers that they need, okay? The board itself then, and our board meets seven times a year, can have up to 45 members. We currently have 44. Mr. Pearlman, is he still here? Ms. Pearlman's in the back. It's a good board, isn't it, Sam? We have to have a business majority, so we have business leaders from 11 counties, along with labor, education, economic development, and workforce programs. We create that local plan. We sustain a one-stop job center system, I'll speak more about that in a moment, and we contract for program and training services for dislocated workers, low-skilled adults, and at-risk young people. All right. We got all kinds of partner programs, and this is part of what the design of the Workforce Investment Act. These are all workforce programs, but you can see some come from the Department of Labor, some come from the Department of Education, some come from the Department of Health and Human Services, agriculture is in there, HUD is in there as well, and you end up with something that looks like that for the consumer, is where do you go to get services? So what we have done under the Workforce Investment Act is pull as many as possible of these programs into a one-stop environment. And you have a wonderful job center here in Sturgeon Bay that is under the leadership of the folks from, it used to be the Women's Employment Project, now it's We Are Hope, Inc. My old friend Sandy Duckett, and she's doing a great job, so that people can come, both employers and job seekers can come to one place and connect to all of these different services. So that's who we are and why you care, okay? What have we done? Going to just do a very, very quick survey here. If I could take you back 15 years, or 16 years, 17 now actually, Northeast Wisconsin, in the late 90s, Northeast Wisconsin was one of the fastest-growing job markets in the country. We could not find enough people to do the work. Probably the best way to talk to you about it was Emerson Electric was up here, and my old buddy Bob Lackey, who's now down at Renco in Green Bay. And Bob came to us, and we worked out a plan to bus 100 Spanish-speaking workers from Green Bay up to Emerson every day to do the work. I helped him put English lessons on the bus up and back. We simply could not, and there were a lot of opportunities for people who didn't have a lot of skills. So at that point, we helped create, and this kind of evolved from the Workforce Diversity Committee. It was a time when particularly Spanish-speaking people were flooding into our area, and that evolved into a group called the Employer Workforce Development Network. And this was a group then of business people who learned how to get along and work together to make our area a place where workers wanted to come, because we didn't have enough of them. And Scott McCallum recognized us as a, gave us a Workforce Innovation Award for our innovative approach to that, and about the same time Senator Cole, God love him, I miss him already, got me a federal earmark grant, which also got me on the website of Citizens Against Government Waste. But we had $1.2 million to upgrade worker skills and deal with some of the language and cultural barriers that we were experiencing at that point in time. And I got to tell you, Door County got a good piece of this, of this grant, especially thanks to a woman named Wendy Dunham, who was Sam's predecessor up here. Now Wendy Seacrest, she works out for Manpower in Boise, Idaho. But Door County got a lot of worker training out of this grant. And I always like to say, because in the economic development world, we can spend a lot of money trying to lure a company into an area, tax breaks, infrastructure improvements, all kinds of things, and that same company, five years later, can walk out the door. But when you improve worker skills, when you spend money improving worker skills, those workers have kids in the school system locally, and those workers have homes in that community, and they don't move nearly as readily as companies do. So we invested a lot of money back then, I'm very proud of what we were able to do. So at the same time, this lovely young lady there, Dawn Pofana, came to us, and we got heavily involved in offender reentry. Wisconsin incarcerates twice as many people as the states around us, as you may know. And the average male adult who's incarcerated costs us $31,000 a year to maintain. The maximum security facility in Green Bay has 1,100 men incarcerated there, do the math. So we began a program with Oshkosh called Windows to Work that has since become adopted statewide. In 2005, we expanded the program up to Lincoln Hills, and I got a second earmark grant in 2010 to develop a female-focused offender reentry that we use at Tachita. So we have been perceived as a leader statewide in the whole issue around offender reentry. Lot of good stories there. Then in 2002, as you may recall, we had a bad recession, not as bad as the recession we've had recently, but what this recession did was it affected the heart of our economy. The heart of our economy were men and women who got out of high school, went to the factory, joined the union, made a good wage, and never really learned another thing. Low-wage, or low-skill, high-wage jobs. In 2002, for a variety of reasons, that economy fell apart, and we were hit very, very hard. And these were just some of, you know, in 98, we were busing 100 people up to Emerson. In 2004, Emerson closed, maybe it was 2003. My poster child was always Miro Aluminum in Manitowoc, well over 1,000 men and women. And when we went in there, we found a third of them at or below 4th grade reading in math, never touched a computer. The heart of our economy had fallen out. So one of the things, in addition to dealing with those, we had a lot of money at that time to help people retrain, but we didn't have any jobs to retrain them for. So one of the things that we did at that time is, on September 18th, 2003, we sponsored an event at the brand-new Packer atrium. Dr. Richard Florida, who had just written a book called The Rise of the Creative Class, came in and spent a day with 300 community leaders, talking to us about what the hell was going on in the economy, because we knew we were in a brand-new world. Following that, my colleague and I, from the Fox Valley, and I sponsored a study. David Ward, who may be known to you, he's a good Door County boy, and Dennis Winters, who currently is the chief labor economist in the state, did that study for us, and we found out that we were in the old economy, and we needed to get in a new economy. So coming out of that, we had a big event then in 2004 to roll that study out, and that resulted in the creation of our New North Organization, an 18-county region that focuses our energies, has done some excellent things, and particularly, what their big success is the creation of the Wisconsin Wind Energy Association, has gotten our state into the whole pipeline of manufacturing parts for wind turbines, and New North continues, frankly, to be the envy of the state in terms of the level of organization that we have. All right. So then in 2005, I got a call from the Manitowoc Company. Dear Jim, we need 100 welders yesterday. And Lake Shore Technical College down there in Manitowoc didn't even have a welding program. We were suddenly in a whole new economy. People who didn't have any skills were being left out, but there were a lot of places for people with skills, especially the traditional trade skills. And the other big thing that happened at that time is the baby boomers started getting old. The red line are the number of people in Northeast Wisconsin each year who turn 65, and the blue line are the number of people in Northeast Wisconsin each year who turn 18. When I talk to 18-year-olds, I tell them, I look at them, and I say, you're smart people, you know, the only rational response to this information is to enslave the elderly.
Good idea.
Because there are a lot of us, we vote, and we'll always be driving the Buick right in front of you. Still gets a laugh. We also discovered that despite the fact that everybody thought that your kid had to go to college and get a degree in sociology, or psychology, or political science, or communication, that the bulk of our jobs here in Northeast Wisconsin were jobs that required more than high school, but less than a four-year degree. And we need to start focusing on that. These are simply some examples. The numbers are a little out of date now, I need to update this. If I was a kid today, go to NWTC for two years in diagnostic medical sonography, cost me about $13,000, and walk out making 60. Lot of opportunities. So we created the Northeast Wisconsin Manufacturing Alliance, which has now grown to 81 member companies, 21 associate member companies, 19 affiliates. These companies pay dues, $20,000 of their dues goes to scholarships every year. We've had three manufacturing conferences, two manufacturing education partnership banquets. I was the proud winner of their Community Partnership Award this year, and for six years, they've published these all-star magazines. We're particularly proud of the young lady who's a welder on the cover. They print 20,000 of these that go out to our schools. There's an online version with videos. At the awards dinner, I went up to the young lady, her name is Erin Stillman, I said, Ms. Stillman, you're causing me problems, because when I'm in prisons a lot, I'm promoting manufacturing jobs, and I pass these out, and I'm not sure you want to be the pin-up girl on half of the state prison cells, but she said it was okay. We also, this also spawned another group, Insight Publications, to begin to publish a magazine called Insight on Manufacturing that features our companies. Brand-new issue has my contractor, Anne Franz, on the cover with her pink welding helmet. So this goes out to several thousand companies in Wisconsin to promote manufacturing in Northeast Wisconsin. It's been exciting. We also, three years ago, I invested $250,000 of your tax money in a mobile training lab at NWTC. The idea actually originated at Southern Door High School. And we, my staff and I had some plans to try to do some things. We called up NWTC, and we put that very first in the upper-left corner, that very first mobile lab on the road. It has been a huge success in getting modern manufacturing training out to the schools. In 2012, I got that purple trailer into two state prisons, and we, much to the dismay of the security people there, we put 120 men and women from our area through a demo of manufacturing, and I spoke to them about how they would get those jobs. Then soon after, Lake Shore Tech on the bottom right got their trailer. They bought one with $100,000 from the Wisconsin Department of Corrections. And in 2013, we had eight guys at Oshkosh earn a six-credit manufacturing certificate while they were still in prison. Nine guys at Tachita, and nine women, I'm sorry, nine guys at Kettle Moraine, and nine women at Tachita all earned that six-credit in manufacturing. So this has been a huge innovation. NWTC has a second one now, and the Wisconsin Department of Corrections just purchased their own CNC mobile lab. We also created the North Coast Marine Manufacturing Alliance, seven shipbuilding companies, several from up here, and these groups get together to look at some purchasing agreements that give them some economy of scale. They've developed their supply chain, hold vendor fares, and they're doing a lot of cool stuff. How we doing so far, everybody? 2009, as you know, a bunch of really bad people, some of whom are sitting in prison today, screwed up the entire global economy, and we've been dealing with the fallout from that since. My friend John Gorka wrote a wonderful song, "I just love the image that the old future's dead and gone," but this one will have to earn. But despite everything that's going on, two things I know are still true, and that first one is those boomers are moving out. If anybody, and again, I talk to young people a lot, and I tell them, if you can figure out a way to stop that, I want to talk to you. And the other thing that's happening is the level of skills that people need to succeed in this economy is going to go up and up and up. This is a short graph from the BeBolt II study. I was pleased to serve on the advisory committee for it, but it really tells us very quickly what's going on. The gray triangle represent the skills that our workers have. A lot of people on the bottom with few skills, going up to the top to some highly skilled people. The green pentagon tells us what we need. And if you spend any time in our job center here, or any of our job centers, this is exactly what we see. Employers coming in saying, I need this, and this, and this, and we don't have them, and a whole lot of people who simply don't belong in the 21st century. In fact, I was quoted in the Milwaukee paper on Sunday saying that. We simply, what's needed to succeed in this economy, we're in the 21st century, we are not in the 20th century anymore. In fact, I was watching a video last week in the Sheboygan paper of Congressman Petry, in effect, getting beat up at a town meeting because a bunch of people wanted him to turn the clock back 35 years. And it just doesn't work that way. So we maintain job centers, and we call them full-service job centers, or comprehensive job centers in Marinette, Green Bay, Manitowoc, Sheboygan, and Manassas. We have access points in Sturgeon Bay, Shana, Okanto, Niagara, and Koshina. Skip, our office dog, is getting old, but he's still with us. Skip was rescued from death row. He comes to work every day with his mom. In job center services, in the year that ended on June 30th last, 635 people got enrolled services, so they actually got, they actually sat down with a case manager, made a plan, in many cases went back to school. 2,415 dislocated workers, 194 out-of-school youth. I spent 1.1 million of your tax dollars on tuition reimbursement. We kept doors open, so people in Sturgeon Bay don't have to drive to Green Bay to get services. We do a lot of computer literacy training. Work-certified training is a soft-skill training, 90 hours. Work-certified training is a soft-skill training, 90 hours. We've had wonderful success with it. We provide through Anne here, staff for the Manufacturing Alliance, the North Coast Marine Alliance, and the Green Bay Area Healthcare Alliance. So, we're doing quite a bit of stuff here. All right, looking ahead real quick, I just want to show you three pictures that we'll talk about briefly, but I'm looking ahead saying, "Okay, what do we need to do to make sure that our employers have the workers that they need?" This is a chart that shows the middle-class consumption. So, this is, who is taking up resources in this world? And the chart starts over at the year 2000, and what you will see is that between Europe, which is the light purple, and the United States, which is the deep purple, we had most of the middle-class consumption in the world just 14 years ago. You begin to move that line out now, and look what happens. The dark red on the bottom, China, begins to develop a middle class. India, in the orange, begins to develop a middle class. We're moving into, it's not the 20th century anymore. This is the world that our young people, our companies have to survive in, and there are threats and there are opportunities here, but nothing changes this. This is the reality. So, as China, India, to an extent the rest of Asia, develop their economies, the percent of us who are part of the middle class, we still have as many people in the middle class, it's just that there are more of them, just that there are more of them. So, some tremendous opportunities as we go, but this is a reality. The world that many of us grew up in, where I could simply go to the factory and get a good job, that world doesn't exist anymore because those factories are in Eastern Europe, and they're in Asia, and they're in China, and they're in Brazil. It's a different world. And you don't even see South America and Africa on here yet. And as we get out, and unfortunately, I probably won't see it, as we get out toward the end of the 21st century, it's going to be very interesting to see South and Central America, and particularly Africa, begin to claim a share of middle-class consumption. Here's the second one I want to show you. Since January 1, 2000, yeah, January 1, 2008, and December 30, 2013, the American workforce lost 12 million workers. Why? Well, this is the reason. The purple area on the top is the biggest increase, the biggest group, and that's baby boomers getting older and retiring. We're moving out. Nothing's going to stop that. On the bottom, in the deep blue, because the workforce is aging, and because of advancements in medicine, a higher, more and more people are going on disability and dropping out of the workforce. The light-green area in the middle tells me more and more young people are delaying going into the workforce because they're going back to school first before they start work, and that's a good thing. And then on the top, the dark green are people who are looking for work but have given up because they don't think they can find it anymore. So, this is a down, as we look out 10, 5, 10, and 15 years, it becomes a numbers game. After 60 years because of the baby boomers of always having plenty of workers, so if I didn't like you, there were 10 outside waiting for your job. And those numbers change as we continue to go out toward 2020 and beyond. It becomes a numbers game in addition to a skills game. There are obviously some implications for immigration here. And this is the last one I will show you. The makeup of the workforce. So, the colors, and I have a whole talk about this, but the colors represent the different generations. I should have put my cartoon, I have a great cartoon here of, there's two old guys, and they're standing on the street, and they're watching these two kids walk by. And the old guys are saying, "Look at them, damn fool kids wearing their pants down around their knees," and that's what they got. And both the old guys got their pants up to here. Our generations have different approaches to work. So, the, in the graph on the far left, the red are what we call the millennials, Gen Y. We can argue about the dates, but generally, people born between 1980 and the turn of the century. The green are our Gen Xers, born between 65 and 80, and the purple are the baby boomers. The light blue on the right side of that first graph are the traditionalist people born before 1946. You see, by the time we get to 2015, they're in effect out of the workforce. But look, look first at that largest, tallest, blue line. Those are your baby boomers. Look at that as the graph goes from left to right. Look at the precipitous drop in labor, workforce participation by those baby boomers. That's simply a reality. Our Gen Xers, the green, stays pretty stable. It's certainly not going up. Now, those are people right now who are in their early 30s up to about age 50, so they're already in the workforce. And they're going to decline as we get out to mid-century. Look at the red line. Those are your Gen Xers, I'm sorry, Gen Y, otherwise known as the millennials. These are the kids that played soccer, and after the soccer game, and they got beat 50 to nothing, they all got trophies and pizza. Look at, look at the curve of that red line. They are the ones that are going to be our workforce, and we have to figure out how to deal with them. A recent survey was most interesting. It found out that in that generation, 53% of them would rather give up their sense of smell than this. So, that's another challenge is, as the boomers move out, and that group from the late 20th century moves into the workforce, some real changes in their attitude toward life and work, and we are going to have to adjust to them as much as they adjust to us. So, that's the future that I'm looking at. What do you think? We've done so many wonderful things. I can't tell you, the Manufacturing Alliance, particularly the North Coast Alliance, helping workers to get retrained. You know, we've been dealing with the nuclear power plant down Kewanee. We've had so many dislocations over the years. Helping our employers to figure out how to get the employers that they need. Helping poor people improve their life. Helping people step out of prison and not go back. It's just been a wonderful job, and I hope to keep doing it for a while.
Sir, with fiber optics coming up here, we were hoping to generate a lot more higher-paying jobs.
Yep.
I guess personally, I haven't really noticed anything like that, and I haven't seen any retention of the youth that we have in our area.
Okay. You know, we're getting into Mr. Pearlman's job here, but Door County is a very, very unique economy in that you have such, you have such a large tourism industry, which has its ups and downs. But at the same time now, you've had, here in the Sturgeon Bay area, you have some very strong manufacturing, and base shipbuilding, especially since the Italian company, Finn Cantieri, has took it over, has been doing some good things. Palmer Johnson's springing back on us little by little. You've had expansions at places like Thermotronics and WireTech. So, should we see more good-paying jobs? You know, manufacturing is your top of the line there, and manufacturing, while they're looking for people, are still doing more with fewer people because of the technology. Healthcare, you know, Door County does not, you have Mercy Medical here, but you don't have a strong healthcare system compared to say, what, a large hospital system, say the way Theta Care in the Valley, or if you go down toward Milwaukee. So, work with SAM on getting higher-paying jobs. In terms of retaining our young boy, we haven't even scratched the surface there. And some of it is the fact that we're in that transition right now, and too many of us are still, we still want the young people to be us, and they're not going to be. They're going to learn from us, but we're still adjusting to them. I have no magic bullet as to how to keep young people in an area. I will say this, let me make one quick observation unless, running out of time. One of the realities in my life, and for those of us in the room who are baby boomers, we had this wonderful thing, because what happened was, in the late 60s, when the boomer generation began to enter the workforce, there were not enough places for us. So, the American society did something really beautiful at that point. They built the universities, UW-Green Bay, 1967. So, these became places where we could go and party for four or five years because there was no place for us in the workforce. So, we had an extended adolescence. Now, I was in the high, I was in the seminary throughout, so we didn't have girls around or nothing, but we still, those were fun days. With the numbers game coming up, unfortunately, our young people are not going to get extended adolescence. And what we're going to, one of the things we're going to have to do is attach them to real jobs earlier in their careers, and help them move into good jobs much more quickly than we ever did. Now, to their advantage, if they're doing that, they're going to have money in their pockets, because cars and girls cost money. Actually, the women will be in the workforce, too. So, the more that we can do with our young people to get them out into our factories, into our hospitals, into our, into our other industry sectors, and help them make connections and understand, the more we are going to retain them. And Door County has done, has been ahead of the curve, particularly the folks down at Southern Door in doing some of that, but we have to do more. Our Manufacturers Alliance just reaches out to schools all the time now with tours and career speakers, and apprenticeships, and all kinds of things, and we have to keep building on that. Sir?
I have a question. Many nations require like a two-year period of work development before they go into higher education after secondary schools.
Yep.
Do you want to comment on that aspect of?
It's not, it's just not in the American culture. We're still at a place where many, many, I would say better than 50% of our parents still think of technical education as a failure, and they want their kid to go on to that university. And part of, part of the attitude of this millennial generation is, they went to college. 63% of that millennial generation has a bachelor's degree. And then they got out into the workforce and found out that the need for bachelor's degrees in psychology, which is still our number-one major in this country, or the need for sociologists, wasn't there. But it's still, it's still very, very difficult to go to a lot of our parents and our school administrators and say, "Maybe we need to rethink this." Now, that's changing very, very quickly. I was really hoping, I was thinking of Pete Seeger, because one of his last public appearances on two canes, he was in the Occupy movement, walking up the Wall Street. But I was really hoping with that whole Occupy movement, one of the, one of the things that would happen is more of us would begin to think about, before I borrow another $10,000 for my kid to go to the university, what's going to happen when he finishes? The average gen, the average millennial, and there are roughly 7 million millennials in this country, the average millennial has student debt of $45,000. You know, work that one out, and we've got a banking crisis waiting to happen. So, it's just not our culture yet. Things are changing. In, as an example, in the year 2000, NWTC graduated 19 welders. In 25, 2005, NWTC graduated 28 welders. In 2012, NWTC graduated 130 welders. So, we're building that awareness. We've built the capacity. We're getting, we're getting more interest in those kinds of things. Okay.
Biz?
We got kind of the 101 from Jim on how important this is, and I'm glad that he hit on the mobile lab. Not only getting it in our schools for the kids, so they get some direction on what to do when they graduate from high school, but getting the labs in the prison.
Yep.
Because these guys, the day comes when they're going to get out of prison. If they don't have any training or anything, they're going to, they're going to be just lost when they walk out in the world. And we found that out when we built a new jail here in Door County, that it was important to get NWTC involved and getting GED for these kids, and helped cut down in not only the prisons, but in our jail, and the recidivism. Because if you don't have a direction on where to go, and some training to get out to get a job, you're just going to go back to being a criminal. And I think that we've already begun to correct some of that with the mobile lab.
Well, I'm proud. We've led the state in that effort. The mobile lab has been great. Now, to see Department of Corrections invest in their own is super, so that people can get up-to-date, you know, training on CNC machines. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished there.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you for having me.
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to do two items, and then we're going to take a break. I'm waiting for your comment now.
All righty.
We're going to take a break after we get done with the loan application.
Okay. The Administrator's Monthly Report, as we all know, we've had a, 2013 was a year of transition for us. We did a compensation study. We did a look-see at our health insurance, changed our administrative manual, updated our employee handbook. Now, as I see it, 2014 is our opportunity to make sure that our morale is still good with all of those changes, to unify our workforce. We have folks who've moved from years of union representation to minimal union representation. So, that being said, these efforts, when we talk about morale and unifying the team, I think are best led by the employees, rather than something that our management team comes up with and imposes on our employees. It's best led if our employees are the ones that are driving the ship. So, to accomplish that, I have worked with the department heads and worked directly with some employees and asked them to serve on a team that will get together on a monthly basis to discuss morale issues, and also ways for us all to work together better. Making up this team are, it's in your packet, Sally Bowdoin, Joanne Baumann, Greg Colthurst. Did I say that right, Greg? Yes. Diane Franklin, Jake Erickson, Kelly Hendy, Amy Jeanquart, Becky Kerwin, Dwayne Coontz, Erin LeClaire, Ted McCartney, Beth Miller, Sarah Nye, Amy Novell, Bob Schaefer, John White, Kathy White, and Cindy Zellner Aylers. The team will be meeting monthly, and Lori Holtz will act as their assistant, and I'm hoping that they will be guided by our core values that this county board adopted back in 2010, which are respect, integrity, openness, and accessibility, as well as fiscal responsibility. I'm hoping that the recommendations that they bring back to us will be more of a non-fiscal impact, but I'm thinking items like lunches and learns, way for folks to want to come through that door in the morning. So, I'll report on our progress as the year progresses, and if, please feel free to give a suggestion to any of the team members, or myself, or Lori Holtz. And there, if we've not hit a department with this list, if there's someone that you know of that is interested, this is an open team, subject to additions, and I'm certain folks may move away from the team as the year progresses, so please make your suggestions and let me know, and I'll be reporting on our progress. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of December 10 would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
I abstained on the wage compensation study, and it says I voted yes.
Okay. Make that change then. All in favor, say aye. I'll go aye.
In Resolution 21384, minor deal, my name is misspelled. I'd like to have it corrected, please.
Whoa.
Thank you.
Okay. Got that correction, too?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the-- --the--
Whoa.
Thank you.
Okay. Got that correction, too?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. We're gonna do the revolving loan application, and then we'll take a break. So, Mr. Haines, you wanna make a motion to approve Resolution 2014-2?
I would make a motion, we take a break first. I wanna just find it here again.
You wanna take a break first?
Yeah. I just gotta find the resolution here, yeah. I didn't realize it was on there.
You can make the motion while you're looking. Sam's behind you to protect you.
Yeah, I will make the motion.
Okay, is your second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Go ahead, Sam. Be all a mullet.
Absolutely. Many of you are familiar with the Wild Tomato Restaurant in Fish Creek. Britt and Sarah Unkifer have successfully owned that restaurant, I think, for four years now. They have purchased what used to be the Sister Bay Cafe in downtown Sister Bay. They're looking to renovate that space and open it up for this coming season.
Are there any questions?
Is the Wild Tomato staying in Fish Creek?
Mm-hmm. This'll be a second location.
There've been rumors that they're closing.
No.
Good. But here, that's a great place to go.
I'm going there this weekend.
Are there any other questions? Richard, you got anything to say?
Well, I could just, I sat through the presentation, and it is quite an interesting business, you know, where there's a certain days that they sell like over 900 pizzas, you know, 900 a day. Wow. And that's amazing, out of that little place there. They did purchase the property in Sister Bay, which is on the water, which they don't necessarily need water to sell pizzas and that type of thing, but they're gonna have other, other things to buy for people down by the water, waterfront. They have purchased that property already, so that's, they have, they have the plan for the restaurant, and it's quite a nice-looking, not a real huge thing, but it seemed like their committee was very positive about it, very good business sense there, and very positive outcome of the business, so.
Okay. David?
I would add that Sister Bay Village Board and the Sister Bay Plan Commission approved their plans unanimously and are looking forward to them opening their new business.
Okay. Hugh?
I just make a comment, that I've seen the couple borrowing the money in operation, the two hard workers, and they got a great product.
Okay, good. Any other questions? If not, go to your voter board and vote yes or no.
Come on, come on. Well, I'll do it again.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes and one absent. So, we'll take a five-minute break, 10-minute break. Recession, whatever you call it. We'll call the board back, are you guys ready?
Yeah.
We'll call the board back in session and go to Resolution 2014-2. Chuck, you wanna give that off to Biz? Or do you know? I will pass that off to Supervisor Early. Three. Where is he? Three. We must have three. Three, one.
Page 13.
Yeah, yeah, three.
Okay, well, he's not.
Boy, he gets the last one. Do we see where he is, Biz? That's your job, Ben. You're a sergeant-at-harms.
Where's the sheriff?
I'll call for the house.
Call for the house.
We'll get Zipper back here. He wants a good mileage.
We'll sit here for three days.
Would we be escorted to their hotels, then, too?
No, we stay.
For three days?
That's the rule.
Pick it up in your laboratory.
I was telling that to the guy who's at the town board meeting a couple nights ago.
We'll come back.
What was breakfast?
He must have gone out.
We're reconvened, and we're into the resolution on Canna Island, and I'd like to have you make a motion to approve it, and then we'll have you explain it, since Chuck has been in Florida for two days.
We got part of the rest.
This part of the year.
Okay, Resolution 2000, Resolution 2014-3, retention of a construction manager for Canna Island Preservation Restoration Project, and I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Is there a second? Second by Chuck. Go ahead and explain it, and then Eric is back there, isn't he?
Yeah, Eric is here, and he'll, I'll turn it over to him, and he'll, he'll explain what this resolution is.
Thanks, Biz. Good morning. This is kind of our next phase in the restoration project on Canna Island. As we recall, this fall, we hired our architects and engineers to do all the design work for the construction documents. And now with retaining a construction manager for the project, this will be basically the eyes and ears out on the site every day on the island. They'll have a superintendent during the restoration construction phase, which we expect later on this spring to start letting bids out for the project, and it will basically go all the way into May of 2015, or possibly even into the summer of 2015. So, over the next year and a half or two years, we'll be working closely. We're recommending Emil Construction to be the construction manager with the services, and this is something that has been budgeted into the project from the beginning, to hire a construction management firm. And also, it was strongly recommended as we went through our interviews and our process of hiring the architects and engineers to work closely with the manager, initially working on our cost estimates and looking at the final stages of the design work before things are out for bid.
Okay. Are there any questions? Hugh?
I'd like to comment, I've made this comment on numerous occasions before, but typically, the architect is the person in charge of a job like this, and I don't quite understand why we continue to hire other people to look over the jobs, but that's my opinion. I have no idea.
Biz, go ahead. Can you answer that?
Well, I think you, I spoke to this a little bit when we hired our architect, and we kind of learned our lesson when we built the Justice Center. After the building was up, we, we were advised of a very serious problem that we had over there with the, with the metal studs. And the architect was there frequently, but I think the committee, the edoc committee, found that it would be a really good idea to have eyes there every day looking at it. So, in the middle of that project, we hired a project manager.
I was on the committee, I remember.
I know you were. I know you were on the committee. And I think it's important to have a set of eyes up here, you know, to watch that, this is, this is gonna be a project that's very historic. It was built in the late 1800s, and they're capturing the period from around 1920 to 1940, you know, because of certain things that were done back before the turn of the century you just, you just can't do today. They had the gutters and stuff were on the inside walls, well, they froze and busted, and of course, now they're on the outside. So, that's just one example, but we went over this thing very thoroughly, and Emil was the low bidder. Emil has also agreed to that if we do wind up spending less money than what they thought it would cost, that we don't have quite that much money, that they would even come down lower in their costs. And the next, the next bidder was more than double of Emil, and a third one was even about more than triple. So, I think for the money that we are gonna invest in Emil, it's a good idea to have them there.
So, Emil will not be able to bid on the jobs, they're just the construction?
No, they've agreed that they, that, and we asked that question, and they said that they would not bid on any of the actual work if they're, get the construction manager job unless we would ask them to do certain things. So, that was really a good answer.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
Okay, hold on.
Hold it.
Oh, goodness.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is opposition to the non-metallic mining reclamation. Susan, you wanna make a motion and explain it?
Resolution number 2014-04, I move that we approve the resolution. I'm not gonna read all of that, but you see the title, Opposition to Senate Bill 349, which restricts local control of non-metallic mining, reclamation, air quality, water quality, and quantity, highway damage, highway use contracts, explosives use, borrow sites, and material disposal sites. And I'm gonna lean very heavily on...
Ben seconds it, by the way. Right, Ben?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We're gonna lean on Greg, and I think Mariah was here for a while, I don't know if she still is, but Greg certainly can get background on this.
Go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Real quickly, SB 349 is a bill specifically to expand the frac mining industry, which is in the west-central, northwest part of the state. And it's an industry that is currently booming. I think four, five years ago, there might have been three frac mines out there, and now there are over 100 sites that are being mined. The bill is, is really amending or regulating or taking away a lot of the local regulations and zoning, primarily for the towns, but more recently, the county association is finding some interpretations that may impact county zoning and regulations as well. So, I'll direct you to the bottom of page 19 in your packet, if you haven't read that already, and also the top of page 20, and then again on the top half of page 26. And that really spells out some of the, some of the zoning and regulation issues that are being impacted. The language is very broad. It's open for a wide variety of interpretations, and both Rick Stadleman from the Wisconsin Towns Association and Jimmy Vandenberg, executive director of Wisconsin Land and Water Conservation Association, are both recommending that both towns and counties continue to put resolutions opposing SB 349. A lot of discussions for changes have occurred in the last couple months. However, Senator Tiffany does plan on reintroducing this bill, and from what we've been hearing, there's not going to be a lot of changes. So, I believe a couple weeks ago, the Wisconsin Towns Association had received over 250 resolutions from towns opposing this bill. So, I think it's important that we stay on top of it. We'll keep you posted, but for now, I think we need to take action on this bill.
Has anybody got any questions? I'm sure everybody's read all the stuff in their back of their head.
Clear as mud.
Okay, we'll, got anything else, Susan, or is that it?
No, no, no. It's, you know, I think a lot of the people here have been following this bill or have worked on it in their local towns and villages, so you know what's going on.
So, we'll go to the voter board, either approve or disapprove. Gonna use it while he's working.
What a battery.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is in support of nonpartisan redistricting system. Susan?
Yep. I'm looking for all the numbers here. I move that we approve the Resolution 2014-05 in support of a nonpartisan redistricting system.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dale. Go ahead.
This came to us because Taylor County passed a similar resolution and sent it to Dan, asking for our support, and he forwarded it to legislative committee, and a few other counties have as well. In fact, just a week ago, I think we got one from Dunn County. But the bottom line here is that Wisconsin's current system of redistricting doesn't work. The last time that the redistricting plan at the state level was accomplished without significant court involvement was in 1931. So, there have been decades of the court having to be involved, costing lots and lots of money for legal fees, et cetera. And this is, neither party is blameless in this. Whichever party happened to be in power at the time has used the law to their own benefit and the, you know, not benefit of the other party. And what has resulted, Reed Ribble, I think if you read your articles, there's been a lot of media attention to this, a lot of editorial boards, and he has a quote in one of them, which is that what's happened now is that instead of voters picking their legislators, legislators are picking their voters. I'll quote Mr. Fisher, who was speaking, we were talking about this last week, and he made the comment that it's to the point where neither side will listen to each other, that there can be good ideas on both sides, but nobody listens to each other. And one of the, one of the reasons for this contentiousness and unproductive climate at the state and federal level is because we have safe districts. The majority of them are safe, they're non-competitive. As a result, legislators don't have to listen to all their voters. Their biggest concern is getting elected in a primary, and in order to do that, they have to listen more to the people on the very far left or the very far right, and they're more beholden to their parties. And so, they don't have to cooperate as much or compromise and get the people's business done. And it would be one thing if there wasn't any other way to do this, but there is. And you read about the Iowa model in your articles, which is one of seven states that do this differently. In this one, they, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau for Iowa draws the districts, and in the others, Arizona being one and five others, they have an independent, nonpartisan agency that does the drawing, and they don't have the problems that we do in Wisconsin. So, I ask your support for this, and my committee does.
Are there any questions? Ken?
Yeah. I do have a problem with this. Sue's right in what I said. It's really disappointing to see our legislators. If, if I say two and two is four, and I'm a member of one party, and say Chuck is a member of the other party, he's gonna say, no, it's not. And if he says two and two is four, I'm gonna say, no, it's not, because we're never gonna agree. And I get real tired of them. Certainly, both sides, somebody should be able to stand up and have a good idea, and everybody agree to that, that it's a good idea, but the opposite party won't. And I find that disturbing. But I don't like this being before us because even with my comments, they're political comments. This is supposed to be a non-political board. We're not supposed to get involved in that end of it. We don't run as Democrats, Republicans, independents, what have you. And because of that, I would like to see this tabled, or, Ben, you're more up in the than I am. There's something about you can't table, or what? But maybe send it back to committee to look at a little more, there's no rush on this. I just, I just don't feel we should be looking at this. So, I'd make a motion, we table it if that's possible, or just make a motion to send it back to committee.
Which one?
We got a motion.
Which one is correct? Which one?
You can table it.
There's something about tabling, I remember, that...
A tabling motion is something you would do to put something on the table for later in the meeting.
In the meeting.
And it's non-debatable, and that's the, the part of the tabling motion that is most often abused to kind of end debate early.
That's what it is, okay.
So, your motion?
So, the motion would be to send it back?
I've been saying that for 17 years, but...
Yeah? Go ahead.
I'll be quiet. Motion or, yeah, motion to send back to committee.
I'd make a motion to send it back to committee.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that. I share some of Ken's concerns, and I'm not comfortable with what I know about it just yet.
Okay.
I am concerned that we're showing, it's gotten a little more partisan than what we should be looking at at this point in time.
Okay. So, the motion is to send it back to committee. Is there any, you can discuss that, though, can't you?
Correct, and it's usually helpful to give the committee some directions as to what...
Exactly. Ben?
I guess I, I don't agree with the motion, sending it back to the committee, looking at the things that are presented in the packet, or the information from the packet. I think it's pretty clear that this really isn't a partisan issue. The issue is partisanship. That's the difference. So, the nuance is that we would like our voters, excuse me, our elected officials in Madison and Washington, DC, to be beholden to the voters, not through a process that, where gerrymandering and other court issues are, have to decide who gets the vote for whom to give legislators protected districts. Instead, you know, this resolution, you know, would affect both parties equally and give everyone a fair shot. So, I think we can vote this up and down here. Yeah?
Dale?
Yeah, this seems to be happening after every census, when they, when they can change. Like, we just took here in Door... Like, we just took here in Door County, and everybody, you know, went through the county board, and, you know, pretty much agreed on it, but it was a nice process. And every time, it happens in every 10 years, it costs money, and then it costs, you know, it's hate and discontent on either side, or all sides. And it's clearly that it's not going to be solved the way it's going on right now, because it's been happening since the 30s. So hopefully, if more counties sign on and say, listen, we're tired of this, we could use that money that you're spending on legal fees back in our county, because, you know, you know we're on a budget here. And to me, it's a waste of money. It starts off right away, right after the census, and it causes problems between both sides. So that's why I think, you know, this isn't going to happen for another nine years, we might be coming back with more. But it's a start. It's to show the people that the citizens that are, whether Republican or Democrat or Independent, are just tired of the way the state is run right now.
Okay. Ken?
That's my point, Dale. There's no rush on this, it won't happen for another nine years.
Right, to start.
So one month isn't going to hurt, isn't going to hurt at all. If we just, can we just send it back for a month, they can bring it back, just so we have a little more time to look into it.
Okay. Mark?
I mean, I could support this as it is right here. I don't have super issues with it. I do have a couple of issues, small issues, and I don't think, as Ken and a few other people said, sending it back to committee for another month is going to hurt anything, because we do have some time. But there are, like, line 17, for instance, you said to give direction to the committee, so I would rather prefer it saying allowing an elected legislature to, you know, pick districts rather than political party, for instance, would make that a little less political in nature. So that's just my feeling on it.
Okay, any others? So the motion is to send it back to committee. Can we put a time limit on that, or?
There's not a meeting. They don't have a meeting. We have our next meeting in March.
Is that, there's nothing that's going to happen between now and March on this bill?
Well, I don't know. The concern, I guess, is that these are in committee right now. They've been in committee since they were introduced in November, or earlier, September, maybe, and if, and they're not coming out of committee, so the hope would be, obviously, that they'd come out, there'd be hearings, but there is some thought that the legislative year or session will finish up sooner, so I don't know if that matters. That would be a timeline thing.
Any other questions? Biz?
Well, I got the same concern, I think, as Supervisor Fisher, because I don't think it's that long ago, we did redistricting.
This is redistricting for the congressional, or is it for the, not for the county?
Yeah, this, this is to change how the state would do the redistricting for the congressional seats and the state senate and assembly seats.
There's nothing to do with Door County.
It's their process.
I mean, the ones we did here a year or so ago. That's three years ago already, huh?
Yeah, I guess.
Three. Okay, motion on the floor to send it back to committee. We'll go to the voter board and express your opinion.
So we're voting to send it back?
Yeah. Or not.
That has passed, 13 yes, seven no, so go back to your committee.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, can you give us more direction? I mean, Mark gave us a suggestion, do you want more information, is that what you're saying to us?
That would be, for me, that would be helpful. I'm not really against what you're, the basic, just to be fair.
But you want a broader explanation?
Yeah, and I want a little more time for personal, to be able to absorb it, look into it, think about it, okay?
Okay.
Okay, next item, go ahead, Ben.
Perhaps more comparisons like those in line 14 of the current resolution that point out that the cost to taxpayers is $1.9 million for all the litigation related to the 2011 redistricting process. We just had a presentation where less money was better spent on training workers, and the impact that that has on our, on our community. Perhaps more comparisons like that could be brought forward to make this resolution successful next time around.
Okay. Next item is the mandatory resolution for Door County Administrative Manual and Employment Board. Somebody would like to make a motion to pass, I mean...
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Resolution 2014-6.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David. Go ahead.
Certainly, I'd ask Human Resources Director Handy or Corporation Council Thomas to walk us through the changes, either one of the two of you, or both. Kelly?
Good morning. The amendments to the manual are beginning on page 38 of your county board packet, or on your Zoom, and it starts with the bridge tenders. And this language from the bridge tenders was taken before the Highway Committee and approved unanimously, which will allow the bridge tenders to pay their annual insurance premiums averaged prior to a seasonal layoff. The second section is the Cobra Insurance, and that's just to provide the employees with the information of what Cobra is and how it works for the employee. The next section is the Flexible Spending Account, which is a benefit to the employees, and it is an employee contribution. The employer does not contribute to this benefit at all. The next section is Holiday. The holidays were to accept the library from the Friday after Thanksgiving. The library board determined that they wanted to remain open on that Friday, and that will allow the library employees only to have two personal holidays. The next section is for the paid time off. The numbers are for telecommunicators, and then the two prorations for the part-time. The next section is a bereavement section. It's to provide more guidance and clarification for the employees. And then the last section in that will be incorporated into the manual is the password section. This was brought forward by our Information Systems Director to change our passwords to make them a little bit more complicated, so, and more complex in nature.
Are there any questions on this? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no. Up or down? That has been on a vote of 19 yes, one abstention, and one absent. So that's passed. Appointments, the commission and board appointments, there's one. Someone would like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Kathy's first, who said that? Got to have a second, Kathy.
It's David and Kathy.
David? I didn't see who said that, second.
Kathy.
Kathy, I second David.
Okay. Got it. Are there any questions? This is for the library board, it's a gentleman by the name of...
Bob, Robert Dixon, Bob Dixon.
He, his name is being forwarded to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Jack Jordan. Jack served very well on the library board, and unfortunately, he has passed away. So Mr. Dixon's name is forwarded to fill the unexpired term. Many of you know Mr. Dixon, he is in Supervisor Enigles' district and serves on the village board for the Village of Egg Harbor, and also runs...
Shallows.
Shallows, thank you.
Any questions? If not, go to your voter board.
Just like being on the state legislature, you just keep punching. You got your papers out good yet?
That's passed, 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the disposal of surplus property. Ben, want to make a motion and...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2014-08, disposition of surplus real property.
Seconded by John Nainas.
The long and short of it is that we have found out that we own someone's private onsite waste treatment system, and we don't necessarily want it, so we're gifting it to that individual free of charge, because they're using it.
There really isn't a full reason behind it. John, you know a little bit more about that. This was a piece of property that was originally given to the county and decided not to use it, correct?
A long story short, this is just cleaning up something that was kind of missed a while ago. When the new highways went through, and both of them now, it comes to, comes to a head right now, and it's a piece of property that's, it's of no value except to the, it can't, nothing can be done with it, you and I should own it.
But it was the, they were the original property owners, isn't it, it's going back to the...
Yeah, it's...
Well, no.
No.
Cleanest, cleanest fontaine.
Go ahead, Pete.
I owned that property by all time.
We're giving it back to you, huh?
No, I don't want it. And it was sold, not, that piece was not sold because the highway went through, and I was reimbursed, my parents were reimbursed for the portion of the highway, and I left the three-quarter or half inch, half acre left over. But it was never recorded.
Okay.
So when they came to do the transaction now, from the county to these people, they find out that the county never, they didn't own it, they owned it, owned it, but it was not recorded.
Okay.
So now they're going to straighten it all up, as John said.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
I'm in support of it.
Okay, good. Go to the voter board and approve this then. Or not approve it, I guess we could say. Mr. Haynes? That has passed with a vote of 20 yes, one absent. An ordinance, amendment to chapter 31 Door County Code. Biz, you're on deck.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a mandatory ordinance, number 2014-1. Down towards the bottom, it says, "Chapter 31 Door County Code shall remain unchanged and shall continue in full force, and in fact, except as amended by this ordinance."
Okay.
And I would ask Grant to speak to the ordinance.
Well, I got to get a second first. Seconded by Kathy. Go ahead, Grant.
Very briefly, the mandatory ordinance is directed solely at underage persons and alcohol, and the code was badly in need of updating. This was done at the prompting, the request of the Assistant District Attorney. And what this does is bring our current, our code up to and in conformance with the current version of the Wisconsin statutes. To give you some idea of how out of date our code was, we still had the drinking ages being 18, so...
It should be.
That's for sure.
It is already.
Are there any questions? Ready for the voter board? We'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
I think I'll vote no, just because I like that 18.
And that's coming from you.
Memories.
I voted no.
That has passed, 19 yes, one no, and one absent. That has passed.
Is this going to go on until April?
There's no new business I know of, oral committee reports?
Could I make a comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman? I don't know if everyone's aware of it, but last Friday, I was among a number of people who received a letter from my propane supplier.
Yeah.
My propane's going from $1.24 a gallon to $6 a gallon. And I don't know if the county can do anything with this, but it's a fairly significant economic impact to a number of people within the community.
I agree with you, but I don't know what we could...
I don't know if there is, but I just...
I know the governor's working on it.
I got some fuel on all furnaces that are laying around.
Go ahead, Joel.
I'll just comment on that, and the one statement that was made on the news when they were, you know, doing the pros and cons on both sides, this was on all the news channels, is that they are encouraging people to contact their economic support departments in their counties for assistance on such items as that, so that's the thing that needs to be put out there.
That's up there, yeah. Okay, any oral committee reports? If not, are there any questions on the committee minutes? If not, review vouchers and claims. Any questions on the vouchers and claims? Joel, you still want the county board to convene at 10 o'clock next time to help you out?
That helps me.
I'd like to have a motion to have the next county board meeting start at 10 o'clock instead of 9 o'clock, because this gives Joel a chance to come in on the same day and not have to stay overnight the night before.
In this case, it'll be not two nights, just one.
Just one. And one of the changes we might make, try to make on the rules in April, is to allow the chair to do this without having to bring it to county board, because sometimes this can be done, you know, without having a meeting, so...
We could meet at 6:30 and get, you know, so people can come in.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mark, is there a second? Seconded by Richard Haynes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so the next county board meeting will be Tuesday, February 25th, at 10 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, if the business be transacted, I'd like to make a motion we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Feierstein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.